Come at order.
Heavenly Father, we come before you just saying, Lord, thank you for another day. We ask you to give us grace and mercy, Lord. We know that you're able to keep us from all hurt, harm, and danger, Lord. We ask that you give us wisdom and understanding so that we can do the task that's set before us. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. Can we also have a moment of silence for Quanita, one of my classmates who lived on Field Street, who passed away in a fire. She lost her grandson, her son actually, last year, and now she's gone. And it's very difficult for the family, so. Thank you.
Roll call, City Clerk Golick.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kowinski. Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Markovich.
Here.
Let the record show eight present, one absent. Black History Month presentation, Councilman Higgs.
Yes, first, before we read the history of Ms. Dur, I want to say, thank you. Unfortunately, she's unable to attend, but her son is here. Been knowing Ms. Dur basically all my life, and as a kid, we had Brooks House. And I used to go to Brooks House as a kid, and Ms. Dur was very active and was a part of a number of organizations within the community. She's one of the pillars of the African-American community and the city of Hammond. And for that, I acknowledge her for Black History Month. So if you could, please, Clerk Golick, read the history of Ms. Dur for me, please.
I don't have it, Councilor.
You don't have a copy? Hammond has a copy.
Willamay grew up in East Chicago, Indiana. The Key family was one of many Southern black families that had migrated north during the past Reconstruction years. The Industrial Revolution created jobs, which in turn created better living conditions. Blacks left the South by the thousands and traveled north in search of their share of the American dream. The Key family settled in East Chicago, Indiana. East Chicago, in the late 1920s and early 30s, was made up of a large immigration population. The city was literally a smorgasbord of ethnicity, immigrants. Immigrants came to the United States for the same reason blacks migrated north. They came in search of a better life for themselves and their family. Blacks in the North faced better living condition than those in the South, yet discriminations in the North loomed large on the job and in public places. An incident at a community swimming pool is surprisingly the only incident of overt discrimination that sticks out in my mother's memory. The black children were allowed to swim only after the white children finished swimming. Each day before the white children were allowed back into the pool to swim, the pool was drained, scrubbed, and refilled with clean water. Willamay launched a personal boycott and refused to go to swim at all. To this day, Willamay says she has never learned to swim. The migration of blacks from the South and the influx of immigrants created more people than jobs. The Depression hit in the 1930s and created more people than jobs. The Depression hit and worsened the already bleak economic situation for many blacks. During the Depression, Willamay's uncle, Plate, from Chicago's South Side, sold moonshine to help sustain the Key family. World War II ended the Depression, but unemployed whites were hired over blacks. Job discrimination against blacks was more than apparent. President Roosevelt and his New Deal created National Youth Administration. The Works Project Administration, known as the WPA, and the Citizen Consideration Program, programs created by the New Deal, helped blacks continue their education and obtain jobs. Willamay got a job through the NYA. She worked after school grading papers for teachers. Later, she learned how to sew and secured a job at Albert Givens, a local sewing factory. Forces were now segregated. Blacks had secured more jobs and better wages than ever before, and they were unwilling to give those up as gains. As a matter of fact, blacks began to demand even more. They demanded equal access to housing, public transportation, and public recreation facilities, like the swimming pool. Willamay came of age at the time in history when significant advances in civil rights and liberties were made. Those accomplishments made an incredible mark on Willamay's psyche. In that same tradition, Mrs. Dur has been dedicated to improving life for herself and the black community. Willamay is as enmeshed in politics as a person could be without being a candidate. Willamay's atypical political career began as a vice president precinct committee woman. Feeling that the needs of the community were not being met by her precinct committeemen in the next election, an assistant pastor of a prominent church in the community, feeling comfortable and being the incumbent, he welcomed her challenge. Much to dismay, he defeated, and Mrs. Willamay Dur became the new remains precinct committee woman today, some 20 years later. Willamay has also been an integral part of the community and in which she resides. She is chairwoman of the Lake County Central Democratic Committee. She sits on the Board of the Hammond Public Library and the Board of Directors for the Greater Hammond Community Services. Willamay founded the club as a member. First founder was Mary McLeod Bethune and Mrs. Booker T. Washington. Willamay is the oldest of six siblings. She and her six siblings were raised by both parents, Jim and Addie Pearl McClure Key, with a strong sense of family that transferred over to a strong sense of community. Activist or community-minded person, whichever term you prefer, both are predicated on one strong sense of family and one sense of community as a family. If we are to nurture budding activist or community-mindedness, we need to encourage a strong sense of family and a sense of community as a family.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. For that, I honor Ms. Willamay Dur for this February 2019 for Black History Month. Thank you for your many contributions, and I have roses for her. Queen, can you please come forward?
Well, and I will just say that, and let's note that the passmore Guild is still across the hall, across the street here, and we still can plan on keeping up Mamay's reputation in the community. Thank you.
Public hearings, we have none. Communications?
Councilman, I mean, Mr. President, I believe we're on item four, reading of minutes.
Okay, I stand corrected. Councilman Spatelli?
President, accept the minutes from February 11, 2019. It'll be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson, if the minutes be placed on file.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Approval of claims, Councilman Warple.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we accept the claims, beginning with claims dated February 15, 2019, and ending with claims dated February 20, 2019. Claims 793 through claim 1208 inclusive comes to a total of $4,310,048.33. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs. For approval of claims, is there any discussion, corrections, or additions?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I move that claim number 1209, amend in claim number 1209 for $9,366 to Deborah Dahlcamp from Crown Point. It was for council as a whole, and it was for the remodeling of the council office. Claim 1210 in the amount of $350 to the O-R-A-C Sheriners, sixth district promotional account. Claim number 1211, Hammond Optimist Club, in the amount of $100, sixth district promotional account. 1212 in the amount of $250 to HC3, and that is sixth district promotional account. And claim number 1213 in the amount of $3,490, $490 to Elemental Solutions. And I guess that's for boiler and treatment service and closed-loop treatment service here at City Hall? Yes. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Emerson. That the claims be amended in. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
The only thing, Councilman Markovich, that last night for Deborah was Don Clapp.
Dahlcamp.
Don Clapp.
Dahlcamp.
It's kind of complex, but he said Dahl, but it's not Dahl, so now it's like... Just for the record, so nobody thinks to check with someone else.
Motion on the amendment?
Second.
Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes.
Claims as amended, roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes.
Claims approved. Nine in favor, zero absent. Yes. Let the record reflect that Councilman Kowinski is now in the chambers. Public hearings, we have none. Communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
We all received a letter from Mr. Stoya dated today and concerning the public hearing we had at the Hammond Water Works, and I make a motion that Mr. Stoya's letter be added to the minutes and placed on file. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilwoman Vines, that the letter dated 2/25/19 for Mr. Stoya be placed on file. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Human Resources equal employment opportunity, all department heads from Sharon Daniels Personnel Director, February 19, 2019. Revised Personnel Policy. Department heads will be meeting Wednesday, February 27, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. at the council chambers for the distribution of the new personnel policy. Department heads will be expected to have all employees sign acknowledgements and return acknowledgements to the Personnel Office no later than Friday, March 15, 2019. All employees will be required to sign acknowledgements stating that they are aware of the policies, and the new policy is now available on the city website, gohammond.com. Quick links, employees' important documents. That's for all the new city employees, so they are aware of the new personnel policy as it reflects their job descriptions and requirements.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakels.
Let everyone know, Monday, March 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., at the Hammond Sports Complex, 6630 Indianapolis Boulevard, we have coffee with a cop, join your neighbors and police officers, coffee and conversation.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
On March 16th at 10:00 a.m., as it relates to the public hearing, there'll be another public hearing as it relates to the Water Department being held at the Sports Complex at 10:00 a.m. So anyone interested in coming out, is it the 6th or the 10th, to be correct?
It's March 6th, I believe, at 10:00 a.m.
I said the 6th. Warple was just saying, so I was just making sure.
The 16th seemed, I don't have it in front of me.
Six.
Six.
At 10:00 a.m. So anybody have any concerns or questions in regards to the water and how it's going to be distributed, or how it's going to be implemented, or any concerns, they can address them at that meeting.
Any other communications? Communications closed. Committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines?
At this time, I would like to read the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Wednesday, March 6th, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School, that is at 6:30 p.m. On Friday, March 8th, Edison Community Watch on the Road will meet at Golden Manor Senior Apartments, that is at 1:00 p.m. On Tuesday, March 5th, Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, March 1st, at Irving School, beginning at 9:15 a.m. This is a bilingual program. On Tuesday, February 26th, the Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association meets at the American Legion on Goslin at 6:30 p.m. As I say, every meeting, this is an opportunity for the residents to come out and find out what's going on in your neighborhood and learn crime prevention measures for you and your family and your property's protection, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you very much.
Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports closed. Ordinance for third and final passage, we have none. Item 10, introductions of ordinances. City Clerk Golick.
Item A, ordinance 19-04 sponsored by Councilman Higgs. The petitioner is Swanell Incorporated. And ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514. And ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as 712 Highland Street, Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move ordinance 1904 on first and second reading by title, refer to council as a whole with intent to consider on March 11th, 2019, at 5:00 p.m. in the council chambers. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spatelli. Ordinance 19-04, refer to council as a whole at 5:00 p.m. on March 11th. Public hearing also on March 11th?
Intent to consider.
Public hearing?
Intent to consider.
Intent to consider on March 11th. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think Brian Leffler, just for the general public, I was going to give him an opportunity to be aware of what's happening, but I guess, I guess the Chief of Staff can explain. We're rezoning the property, and they're expanding their business, and they've been a business in the area for a number of years. It's actually an investment to the city, so.
Sure. Yes, Swanell obviously is located right here in the 3rd District and has been here for quite a few years. And they recently purchased the Carpenter's Hall, which is adjacent to their property. As part of this process, I believe they're looking to build a newer facility, which will help them expand some of the manufacturing and distribution that they're doing there. They sell all kinds of products through not just Indiana, but other states as well. And they've been a very successful, family-owned company. I've met the owner several times, great person. And it's great to see that they are looking to invest in Hammond. I think this is going to actually create some additional jobs, and I think it's a good thing for all of us in the long run, so.
And, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Is rezoning from C1 to I1?
Yeah, so the zoning, what they're doing is they're rezoning the Carpenter's Hall property to match the zoning they have with their other property. So, obviously, for this type of operation, when you're doing manufacturing, whether even if it's, you know, beverages, which is what they do, you have to have the industrial zoning. One thing I did just think of, as you mentioned that, is that Brian did mention that they are willing to sign a restrictive uses covenant, covenant, which means just because they're going to zone it industrial, they are willing to say that they will not, this property will never be used for some of the other industrial uses that won't fit very well next to Hammond High School or next to some of the residential that's in the area. So they are working together with our planning team to make sure that we're protecting any future owners of the property from doing any heavier or what we consider maybe dirtier manufacturing-type uses in the future.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think so. Also, their plan is to actually tear down the Carpenter's Hall and build, expand their business on that land. That's the goal.
That is correct.
And for those that don't know what they do, they actually, they, I guess, make syrup for pops and distribute them to different restaurants.
Thank you.
A plus for the 3rd District.
It was a motion by Councilman Higgs, seconded by Councilman Spatelli, was it? For first and second reading, refer to council as a whole. Any other discussion? Discussion, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Item B, ordinance number 19-05, sponsored by Councilman Warple. And ordinance to amend ordinance 9363, ordinance 4487, ordinance 4851, ordinance 6099, ordinance 7429, ordinance 7830, ordinance 8211, ordinance 8471, ordinance 8845, and ordinance 9412, also known as Chapter 35 of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to the Hammond City Court and the orderly transition of cases in 2019.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I move for first and second reading, refer to council as a whole on March 25th, 2019, at 5:15 p.m. with a public hearing scheduled on March 25th also.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilwoman Vines, that ordinance is as stated.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Because there's a public hearing on March 25th, this is basically an ordinance that states the clerk should not accept any more cases by no later than September 30th, 2019, because of the winding down of the court. And the common counsel, the clerk is instructed by the common counsel that the city court will cease to exist operation on December 31st of 2019 and should accept the filing of small claims, plenary cases, collection cases, and eviction matters up to and including September 30th, 2019, and no later than that date.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Item C, ordinance number 19-06, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. And ordinance to appropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeepers Tax Fund for economic development purposes in 2019.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
First and second reading, refer to council as a whole, with a public hearing set for March 25th, 2019, and also committee meeting set for March 25th, 2019, at 5:15.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by who? Councilman Emerson? That ordinance is 19-06, refer to council as a whole with a public hearing on March 25th and a committee hearing meeting at 5:15. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
President Markovich, that concludes introduction of ordinances.
Resolutions, we have none. New and unfinished business? Is there any new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
New community Baptist church, which is located at 5461 Calumet Avenue. Reverend Gillis is the reverend there. The supporting beam is damaged to the point where the building can possibly collapse. It's been like that since September of 2018. The building has been declared unsafe to have church services. In fact, they've been having their services at the Boys and Girls Club since then. They also don't have their regular church operations there. The building is insured, but the insurance company is dragging their feet and taking any actions to repair or consider it, condemn it as totally damaged. So Reverend Gillis is totally frustrated at the lack of action by the insurance company. Meanwhile, the building is a public safety hazard. It's located right at the edge of the sidewalk, and I'm told it can collapse in any direction, north, south, east, or west. And of course, Calumet Avenue is right there, which would be a major catastrophe if it poured into that street. Also Lafayette School, it's on the grounds of Lafayette School, which kids or parents during drop-off or pickup, anyway, it'd be a total catastrophe if it collapsed in any direction. And I am, I want a letter, I'm asking to send a letter to the building department so they can take this to the Board of Works and they, so they, they can declare what action to take, either condemn it or repair it. But meanwhile, the city could be liable if no action is taken and a major catastrophe was to happen. Inspector Dave Wine, I mean Dave Heinz is aware of this situation and everybody's on hold now waiting on what the insurance company is gonna do. But we should push to, to have some kind of action taken. So, I'm asking for this letter to be sent to the building department to go on and, and approach it and take some kind of action, either have the building condemned, taken down, or have it repaired. Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion by Councilman Torres, second by?
Second.
Councilman Higgs. Letter be sent to the building department as requested by Councilman Torres and the condition of the church. What's the name of it?
It's, it's the New Baptist Church at.
It's New Community Missionary Baptist Church.
Yeah, thank you. New Community Baptist Church located fifty-one, fifty-four sixty-one Community Calumet Avenue. And it's at the corner of Calumet and Summer Street.
My question would be, is that place, are they still using it and going inside?
No.
No, they're not using it at all.
Is it fenced off in case it does collapse?
No, it is not and it's, in fact, Councilman Markovich, the property's been vacant for quite some time. They're having church at the Boys and Girls Club. In fact, it's unfortunate, but it's, it's not stable, the property's not stable and so they can't have services there on Sunday morning, so they've been using the Boys and Girls Club. And something needs to be done because again, you know, they ain't twenty feet from Calumet Avenue and that's a state highway, of course, but it could fall over and some traffic's going down Calumet Avenue and be a whole building collapse and fall over there, so. It's a sad situation, but something needs to be done with it. That's the same way I feel it in, in respect to some of the properties that sit vacant for months and months. That's why I constantly not only submit letters, but I call and stay on top of it because you don't want properties or buildings to fall over on other people's property and someone else gets hurt when it can be prevented. So, I totally agree, not only should they let it go to the building department, but code enforcement and any and every other department that can look into this and move as fastly as possible to get this resolved because it either needs to be fixed or torn down.
Chair would entertain a motion that that, copy that letter be sent to the Board of Public Works and Safety and to our law department.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpole.
I mean this with all due respect, but do we need to be seconding and voting on where letters are sent? I mean, the councilman asked that a letter be sent, I don't know why it has to be seconded and voted on.
We've done that in the past.
Again, I'm not saying it disrespectfully, he can send a letter, I'm just wondering if we need to actually second it and vote on it.
Anybody can send a letter on their own, but it's being done here as official action, so with the support of the council, then it is a matter of record then.
It was just a question.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Nine-ten Ames, there are a number of trees that are still on the vacant property and I am just requesting the letter be sent to Mark Heinz, again, to try to have those trees removed from that vacant property.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by?
Me.
Councilman Torres, letter be sent to Mark Heinz in regards to trees at the address listed as?
Nine-ten Ames.
Nine-ten Ames Street. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business is closed. Public expression. George Stoya, pass. Councilman. Allen Cheeks.
Councilman Markovich, I hope your wife is doing okay, sir. First of all, I'm not here to step on any toes, so I, you probably should remove your feet from up under the desk. I've done some work with the Race Relation Council of Northwest Indiana for about ten years and part of the component that I took part in was investigating hate crimes and investigating racism throughout Northwest Indiana and throughout the United States. I was very disturbed when I got a call from Yahoo News out of Atlanta in regards to a lady that lived in Hammond, Indiana, that lived a couple doors over from a longtime friend of mine and this gentleman was harassing and intimidating their family. And I got the opportunity to meet the family, meet the little boy that's in a, in a wheelchair and I got opportunity to babysit that family for a couple of weeks. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that that gentleman's moving out of Hammond and that, you know, racism on any level should not be tolerated. And for this man to intimidate that family, you know, do the things that he done to the family dog and all those things, it, it should not be tolerated by, by anybody. You know, my, my first, you know, encounter with the Klan came when I was in middle school and high school, then, you know, in City Hall with the Hammond Police Department and all that madness that went on. So, I took it as a pleasure to help that lady. I took exception to them saying that Councilman Higgs did not try to help the lady. He was never made aware of the incident. The incident went national before it even went local. And, you know, I'd like to thank the Justice Department, the Washington FBI, and the Department of HUD that came out and helped this family and all of the components that done a yeoman's job. And I'd like to thank the radio station and some of the gas station owners that, you know, gave us the resources to babysit that family, you know, 'cause it, it's a tragedy that we had to babysit a family till they felt comfortable in, in, in being in their neighborhood. And, and the last thing I'd like to say is, just thank you to all those people that participated. You have to excuse my voice, I'm, I'm having surgery tomorrow, so I'm under some strong medicine. Just like to say in closing that I do support Swanell. Swanell gave a lot back to the city, gave a lot back to the kids with the, with the football and with the water during the wintertime, helping the seniors, so they should have an opportunity. Thank you, Councilman Markovich, and I really hope your wife's okay. Thank you.
Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move that we move from this meeting.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by? Councilman Spitali, all in favor?
It's the guy in the blue shirt, did you wanna speak?
Yes, I did.
He didn't sign, I saw him, so.
Thank you, I didn't get the opportunity to sign in when I came in.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to have, I'd like to introduce myself, my name is Michael Boyer.
How you spell that, please?
B-O-Y-E-R. And I'm a resident at eight seventeen, one hundred and seventy-third Street in Hammond, which is on the northeast corner of Calumet and one hundred and seventy-third. I'd like to ask a question of the council, if it would be possible for me to receive a petition that was brought by Mobile Specialties to change the alley next to my house, between the two of us, from a one-way to a two-way street, which has already been voted on and approved by the city council. My contention is, the petition, according to my notes, may not have been, might have been a bit skewed as to where the owner of Mobile Specialties asked these people about the petition, the petition. Pardon me. I can tell you that BMO Harris could not sign it because of a corporate law, corporate rule. Edward Jones never got asked about the petition. Brew and Blooms did get asked about the petition, but I'm not too concerned about whether they said yes or no on it. True Blue Car Wash was never asked, Uno Insurance was never asked, the T-shirt shop was never asked. Tippin Decorating, because of its proximity to my home, I do believe did say yes, they voted for the petition. Obviously, Mobile Specialties, since they brought the petition, probably was in favor of it. Quality Upholstery, which is the closest proximity to my home, would not sign and I know that Barton's Pizza also said yes. Also within my notes here, I saw that I went down Woodlawn Avenue to talk to as many of the residents as I could about whether or not they had been asked about this petition. And by my notes, I can't find too many people that are on that residential street and there's twenty of them that said yes to that petition. I'm asking number one, the council, if I can get a copy of the petition that may have been initiated on January seventh, or perhaps January fourteenth. Is that, is that available to me for review?
What district are you in, is anybody?
Number four. Mr. Emerson's district.
I make a motion, we go back to new and unfinished business.
Motion by Councilman Warpole.
Second.
Second by Councilman Higgs, go back to new and unfinished business.
Sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Sir, what's your name again?
Michael Boyer, B-O-Y-E-R.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpole.
Mr. Boyer.
Yes, sir.
I'm not aware of anything that this council passed pertaining to that alley. Were you sure it wasn't the Board of Works that?
My under, okay, I, I might have to get a bit personal about this, if you don't mind. My understanding is that the council had approved it and said, yes, it should be changed to a two-way alley. I could be wrong about that and the reason I could be wrong about that? The proximity of my driveway as, as it relates to Mobile Specialties is, he's right behind me, okay? And it's pretty difficult to miss a red grand bar key when it's, you know, at home and when it's not. I do believe the petition may have been opened while I was out of town, visiting my mom in a nursing home, 'cause I was out of town for six days.
I'm just saying, as far as I know, and I've been to every council meeting since I've been, except one, and recently, we haven't seen no petitions, we haven't approved no one or two-way alley, so I'm assuming it's in the Board of Works? Is anybody else aware of?
Did I perhaps go to the wrong meeting? I mean, I'm not, just asking for, you know.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you. I've spoken with Mr. Boyer and I've spoken with the gentleman from Mobile Specialties. My instructions to him, since he asked, rather than argue with anybody, was to get a fifty-one percent majority of the businesses and, in this case, the residential units on Woodlawn and bring that to the Board of Works and present, you know, that case to the Board of Works. As far as this council voting on it, we, we never have nor should we. So, he told me he did that and, and he, he said he had a fifty-one percent majority. I have not seen the petition, he said he brought it to the Board of Works. And so that, that's, I mean, that's the conversations we had.
I walked into the wrong room, didn't I?
No, I think the Board of Works meetings are here too.
Okay, what?
On Thursdays, correct, at nine a.m.
Board of Works.
One at a time, Councilwoman Vanez.
The Board of Works meets every Thursday at nine a.m. in this very room.
Thursdays at nine a.m.
Nine a.m.
Thank you very much.
You're at the right room, wrong meeting.
I did enjoy it though, I haven't been to a council meeting in quite a while. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
I make a motion, we go back to regular order of business.
Motion by Councilman Warpole, second by Councilman Higgs, to go back to regular order of business. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn, motion by Councilman Warpole.
Second.
Second by Councilman Higgs, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, ayes have it.